Call the meeting order, please. Call the roll.
Ms. Cahoon?
Here.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Ms. O'Neal?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the Board of Education with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. I ask that you come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also be mindful that you may not receive a response to a particular inquiry here this evening. Last and not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, and concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Brett Huber from the Macomb Foster Closet. A little bit more formal this time than I was in my shorts last time. Again, just to speak to George Washington Elementary School. We've exhausted all efforts with the county. They're not going to be providing us any assistance in finding any other location. We're looking at, you know, our own places. But even if you move forward with closing the building on June 30th, as you've indicated in writing to us already, there's a lot going on in that building between your subsidized daycare programs, which are absolutely needed by the residents of Mount Clemens, our programs, which are completely free to 1,200 kids, abused and neglected children in Macomb County. The moving process is probably going to take longer than getting to June 30th, just presuming we can even close on a building and find another location by that time. We're, you know, looking for the opportunity to potentially stay in the building if you're not physically locking it up and shuttering it, or doing something else with it, even if that was just as warehouse space, even if that was just us having access to it but not being open to the public so that we could continue to move shelving and other things to whatever the new location is. We're moving forward with every potential opportunity. I've already toured seven buildings in Mount Clemens and Clinton Township, and there's a possibility I might have an offer, put out to one in a couple of weeks. So, we are trying to find another location. But I do think it's important that the conversation for this community, since whether people use these schools or not, they're paying taxes, and currently, you know, that building is a social service hub for this community, available within walking distance of every resident of Macomb County, every taxpayer of Mount Clemens, every taxpayer of Mount Clemens. And I don't know that they've had an opportunity to really understand what's happening, that this is no longer going to be a family resource center going forward. I mean, the county is ripping stuff out at this point. They're moving. It's happening. So, I think that that public debate is not only healthy for us as an organization, I know it's going forward, but also probably for the entire community. As a 20-year resident of Mount Clemens, growing up here and going to schools, I know, you know, this community, and I was of the type of family that needed those social services when I was growing up here. So, I'm a little sensitive. I run an organization that provides those types of services for people in need. And so, I'm a little concerned about the daycare and all the other programs, not just my own organization, but all the social services, rent assistance, facility assistance, everything else, going away from the people who probably need them more than anybody else. Thank you for your time. I hope we'll hear more about what's happening with the building so that we can make our plans. We hope we'll get as much flexibility from you as possible because we're doing our part in trying to move as quickly as possible. But it is, we've been there since 2014. So, you know, we're a well-established partner of the district in providing these services to the community. And, you know, anything you can do to help us so that we can have a transition period to have as much time and flexibility as possible, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments.
Good evening, school board members. I am Roxanne Brown, a daughter of Mount Clemens who recently returned home after being gone for many, many years.
Your address, please.
15 Meadow Street.
Right.
I, among many things, work as a sub at Seminole Academy. And most recently, along with the permanent teachers, we submitted with the students projects for the Center for, the Center for, the, let me make sure, I know I have the name here, you know, I always get it mixed up, the Interfaith Center for Racial Justice. And I worked with 4th graders, and we worked very diligently together, and they submitted a project that exemplified their idea of what the power of unity could accomplish. Excuse me. And I think Seminole students also, across the board, all of the grades and all of the levels of students and the teachers work together to submit something from each class. And so, this past Monday, Seminole's music students sang along with the Grace Episcopal Church Choir at the actual program. And Seminole was recognized by Carol Sullivan, is she here? Because I just walked in. Recognized by the organization and Carol Sullivan for being exemplary when it comes to demonstrating what unity looks like. And our principal, Dia Bethel, was there to accept the award. She was proud to accept the recognition. So, it was a great week. However, there is a caveat. The teachers were not able to fully participate in this program, and that's because the King Holiday was a workday for them, something I was not aware of until this past Monday, actually. They were able to run over on their lunch hour and get a glimpse of what was going on. When I learned of that, I was really shocked, and then I was appalled. And I still don't really understand, except I am told that three years ago, the Mount Clemens Teachers Union bartered to make the King Holiday a workday in exchange for having an extra day or an extended winter break in February. The school board sanctioned that by voting to approve this request. And I think that obliterating the King Holiday in a district where the students are overwhelmingly African-American sends a message of devaluation. I guess my time is up. I'll just say in closing that, to me, it conveys that the recognition and celebration of Dr. King must not be that important if my teacher isn't able to fully participate. So, really quickly, I want to ask that when this-
Your time is up, Ms. Brown.
Okay.
Thank you for your-
Thank you. All right.
My name is Dr. Sherman Cunningham. My address is 17488 Campus Bank Drive, Clinton Township, Michigan. Now, on your statements here, it says "anyone with concern," so I'm "anyone." Mr. Rickman, I remember your daddy, who was on the board for all those years, Alex Walker, Dr. Eisenfeldt, Deloris Lee, John Lee. All of them had a concern for the kids of this district, and every decision that they made was based on what is best for the students of the Mount Clemens School District. Now, I've been hearing some things in the community that disturbs me. It disturbs me because the legacy of this school system is being affected. And at one time, Mount Clemens was the greatest school district in this area outside of Chippewa Valley, over there where I live, Lons Cruz, Clendale. It has a legacy that needs to be maintained. And, Mr. Rickman, you know, and I know, that we have fought battles back there many years ago to get to where we are supposed to be today. And I'm asking the board to just investigate. There are some things that's going on that I'm being concerned about. It troubles me. And even though I'm not living in this district, but I have a built-in belief and a feeling for this district to be the one of the best, that we had one of the outstanding staff here and people. So, I just want you, the board, to know that I have a concern, and all I'm asking you to do, investigate. Check it out and see if these concerns are really what they are. And if they are, then I know you'll do what is right. But I'm also a member of the Morning Star, Greater Morning Star Baptist Church, where Dr. Tyrone B. Martin is the pastor. And also, I know your pastor, Mr. Rickman, who's right down the street from there. I know Mr. Jim Thompson, Dr. Jim Thompson, who passed away. You had Trist- I mean, that was Church of Christ. So, all I'm asking the board to do is to do your job as we have had boards to do in the past. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments.
Nelson Jackson, 615 Wellington Crescent. I would like to pick up on what Ms. Brown was bringing to this board before the three minutes was up. I'm going to use my three minutes very quickly. And it's appalling, it's very disturbing, it's almost incomprehensible that this district entered into negotiations and negotiated out the Martin Luther King Holiday, a federal holiday, one that was fought for a long time. What that says to this community, what that says to this county, is that it's not important. It doesn't matter if a school district is all black or all white. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is probably one of the greatest theologians that the non-Western world has ever produced. And for this board, because you're as complacent as the teachers' union, for even, it never should have been negotiated, it never should have been discussed, it never should have come up, and when it came up, it should never have been on the table. So, you owe, you at least owe this community an explanation of why this was done and what benefited the board of this district, what came out of that if it was a so-called bargaining chip. It's ridiculous. Following up with Dr. Cunningham, I said, there's some other things that we're, I don't like to go by what I hear, but there's some things that I know. I believe in written documented information. But when you start hearing things that are going on in this district that affect this community, I've been here for a long time. I came here in 1971. And let me say this in closing. I didn't come to Mount Clemens by chance. I looked at this district, I was recruiting out of this district when I was working at the university. And so, I chose to come here. I didn't come here by throwing a dot. I wasn't recruited. I came here because of a wonderful community. And even though this school district is shrinking and is small, this board needs to take more attention as to what's going on in this district, in terms of administrators, in terms of teachers, and it's kind of, let me just put it this way, it's disgusting. Dr. Martin Luther King said that wrong is always on the throne, right is on the scaffold, yet that scaffold sways the future, and beyond, the great beyond, beyond stands God watching out over his own. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Moving the agenda forward. Next, we have Item 5, action item. Item 5, under consent agenda. 5A, approval of the minutes of 1, the December 21st, 2022 regular meeting. A2, approval of the minutes of the January 4th, 2023 organizational meeting. 5B, approval of bills for payment. 5C, new hires. C1, physical education teachers, Seminole Academy. C2, AVAC, CTE, approval of the HVAC CTE program at the Secondary Complex.
It's hiring the teachers for that program.
Hiring of a teacher for the HVAC CTE program at the Secondary Complex. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda. Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C as presented. Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Cahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Next on the agenda, informational items. Item 6A, information coming from the business committee. Are there any questions regarding A, the financial reports? Any question on B, contract listings?
I have a question about the contract listings.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't see anything on the contract listing any longer for pest control, and I want to make sure that that is something we stay ahead of this year. And also, we have our steam tunnels that need to be treated, and that's not happening right now.
Right, because we see elite pest management is on here, but the terms ended in '22. We'll have, we'll follow up on that.
I mean, it's on there, but there's not been a new contract entered into because it's a month-to-month now. We don't have, the contract was not extended.
But they do come.
But they're still here, yes. They're coming every, yes, I'm signing off on the invoices.
Okay.
Each month, or more often as needed.
Okay.
So, will we be putting out an RFP for that service? Or is it more advantageous to go the month-to-month?
I wanted to work with the new assistant superintendent and make the decision whether we want to go out month-to-month or do an RFP. I would think we should be issuing an RFP and making sure that the price we're getting is a competitive price.
How often are they coming?
I don't oversee when they come. I sign the invoices, and I would say that I know that they're coming at least once a month.
Yeah.
And they can, they will come as they're called if they need to be, if they need to come.
Any additional questions regarding contract listings? Moves us to Item 7, superintendent's comments.
January is school board recognition month, and we actually have a gift for all of you, but it's not quite ready yet. Paul has been working with them, and it was supposed to be here today, and it's not. I think we had that same issue last year. So, anyways, the, Paul, did you bring a picture of what they're getting?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you got it? Okay. It's in the packet, thank you. So, there is a picture, there's a vest that we have for each of you. So, this evening, Mount Clemens Community School District is joining school districts throughout Michigan to celebrate January as school board recognition month, another year, or another year after year of unprecedented challenges for public education. You, our board members, and our district have persevered through 2022, and here we are starting in 2023, to provide the best possible education for our kids. Celebrating school board recognition month is one of the very little ways that we can show our gratitude for all that you do, all the time that you give up to be part of us. School board members represent the views and priorities and values of our Mount Clemens residents, our students, our families, and our parents. Too often, the work you do goes unnoticed. The main goal of the school board is to support student achievement, student learning, and to support that goal, all of our board were committed to these needs, creating a vision for what our parents and citizens and our kids want for our district to become, and how to make student learning our top priority. Setting standards for our end goals for our kids. Accountability for our progress towards our student learning goals. Aligning our human resources, our financial resources, our curriculum resources, all of our learning resources to support our students. Creating safe and orderly environments where our kids can learn and our teachers can teach. Focusing on our continuous improvement by questioning, examining, and honestly, just simply paying attention to the issues related to student learning here in Mount Clemens, because this is our most important goal, but in all of the students in Michigan. Being a school board member is a years-long commitment. It's not just a meeting the third Wednesday of the month. There's a lot more that's involved in being a school board member, and you all have other things to do. But here you are, committed to our kids and committed to our district, so thank you. I want to personally thank Sheila Cahoon, one of our new board members, Dante Walker, another new board member. You have no idea of the exciting and wonderful things that you're going to see this year as a school board member here. Janine Walker, Jane Collins, Stephanie O'Neal, Dr. McFadden, and finally, our board president, Mr. Rickman. I would also like to welcome Kiara Smith to our Seminole family. She has been serving us and helping us out this past year, and we are really happy to bring you into the fold of our teaching staff. So, welcome, Kiara. I think I saw her here. Also, a huge welcome as well to Pastor Ireland for teaching our HVAC class and bringing this program from an after-school summer program to an everyday program for our high school students, hopefully that will be able to offer students throughout Macomb County here. So, I appreciate you, Pastor Larry, and all that you've done for our students and the students here, and to help put Macomb, put Mount Clemens schools on the map. We're proud and happy to have both of you joining our teaching ranks. I also want to say I'm really proud of our staff and students at Seminole and at Secondary for the award that they won on Monday at the Martin Luther King, Martin Luther King Memorial Walk, the Walk for Unity. We had some board members there as well, but I was very, very proud of what our kids at Seminole did, and I was very proud of Mrs. McNeely and Mrs. Bethel for their leadership in this role. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, committee reports. There are probably not any committee reports because we have not assigned the committees as of yet. Which brings us to board comments. I will start with Ms. Cahoon.
Me?
Cahoon.
Cahoon?
Cahoon, I'm sorry.
Are these always on?
Yes. Yes, they are.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for electing me. I don't have many comments. I just want to thank the Mount Clemens community for electing me to the school board. I'm hoping to bring forth a fresh face, a fresh idea, and fresh communication with the people in the district, both taxpayers and people that send their kids here. I am going to give you, give out my email address, and I'm very happy to just communicate with people as, you know, as they see, you know, that communication open to me. And that's because the important thing that we have to do is communicate with everyone. We have to have that open line of communication in order to get things done. So, my email address is c-o-h-o-n-s@mtcps.org, and I'm happy to email with any community member, any teacher, or anybody in the district that just wants to have a conversation with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker?
Thank you. I'd first like to thank the voters and parents, students, and everyone who gave me some advice and some encouragement during the election season and who also voted for me in the past election. This is a full-suffering moment for me since my graduation 30 and a half years ago, where I said that I would come back and serve this community, and I didn't know that it would be in this exact capacity, but I am thankful. I'd like to say welcome back to the students. I know that this is a crucial time, preparing for finals. I was once a student. I know how it feels to have pressure, and you'll get through it. Even though this is board appreciation month, I'd like to give a big thanks to our professional staff and our teachers. You guys have a very hard job to do, and you guys are always on the front line, teaching me and passing the education of our students. I'd like to thank everyone on the board for welcoming me, even though I know you all for a very long time, and I just get away to work for the families, students, and parents in the district.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Ms. O'Neal?
I just want to say thank you, Monique, for that comment, and to each one of my board members, co-board members. And I want to honor those that spoke tonight regarding Martin Luther King Day. I honor you, and I thank you for the comment because I heard the passion in each and every one of your voices. And I do want to say, continue to keep doing what you're doing, and keep bringing the concerns and comments to us so we can move forward and make some changes. That's it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Collins?
First, I want to say it's great seeing this many people here. I wish we had this many people at our workshop and our board meeting and being more involved because we need you here, because we can't do this alone. It's a tough position to be in when you have to guide people in the right direction and listen to things that are going on, and there's a lot of misinformation. If we had more people here, we could kind of eliminate some of that. I want to say a special thank you and congratulations to Pastor Ireland for the amount of energy you have put into this HVAC program and the commitment you've had to our kids, and to David for seeing this vision. For those that don't know, this gives the opportunity for our kids to be job-ready when they graduate. HVAC is a 5% job growth right now. It's a declining industry, and that job is needed. So, we have a lot of work ahead of us to make the program bigger, and we'll do it, and we'll get there, but I am so excited about it. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Walker?
Well, I just wanted to thank everyone that came out tonight for your very heartfelt comments, and please know they don't fall on deaf ears. We hear every word you say, and it means a lot to us that you share your thoughts and concerns with us. And to our students, welcome back to 2023. It's already the 18th, yikes, of January, so time's moving fast. So, enjoy every moment of school and do your best. Those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you very much. Dr. McFadden?
Thank you, sir. First of all, congratulations, congratulations, welcome to the board. Hope you got your sleeves rolled up, so looking forward to that. And thanks to the community for giving me a second chance, another chance to work on every half. I heard the concerns tonight. I heard that things is going on and the worriedness. This position is, we're here because of the community. We're not, it's not a self-interest board. We listen to what you say and your concerns. Your thoughts are our guidance. If I don't know what you're thinking, you know, then I can't really get to the projection of where I need to go. Most people spoke tonight- Most people that spoke tonight, you know, are my models, my role models, my mentors. So I definitely take their words of advice and opportunities to make sure what's going on. We would do our due diligence and do the best we can to figure out what's going on. I'm pretty sure of that. I know we will. I know I will, and I know a couple of people on the board also will follow that suit. Madam Superintendent, thank you for those comments of appreciation. I do appreciate this district, the people that works in this district, and I do appreciate my board members. So I thank you. And we will figure out and see what's going on next. And, um, Seminole Academy staff, thank you for the work you put into everything, and Mrs. Bethel and the staff, thank you for the gift and card that I have on this table. I appreciate that. Um, I know that this is a school board appreciation month, but reality, I appreciate everybody else. I'm just doing my job for you. Thank you. That's it, Mr. President.
Great. Before I get to my comments, I would like to talk about this packet that's in front of you. Uh, what this packet is, these are six proposals that were sent by firms to assist us in the superintendent's search. Because of technical issues, I was unable to get them to you sooner, uh, but I'd like to, uh, for the, my colleagues to review this. Uh, and in the very, very, very near future, we will be, uh, assembling again to talk about, uh, these proposals and how we want to approach, uh, dealing with the proposals for the superintendent's search form. So I'm giving you some homework, so. So, you ready to work? That's the first. Big, big assignment right there.
Yeah, that's big.
Um, next, um, I would like to present the following for policy, uh, no, for committees. On the policy committee, I've asked Dr. McFadden to chair that committee, and on that committee will be Ms. Sheila and Mr. Walker. The business and finance committee, I'm asking Ms. Collins to chair that committee, and on that committee will be Dade and Sheila. The personnel curriculum committee, I'm asking Ms. O'Neill to chair that committee, and on that committee will be the team of Walker and Walker. Uh, the extracurricular, uh, athletic committee, myself and Ms. Collins, and I will appoint a third, ask a third person to serve on that committee, um, in the very, very near future. Those are the committee's assignments for this year. Uh, we only have really three standing committees, and actually, we're actually four standing committees. Uh, so I try to even them out as best possible. So there you have it. I would like to start out by saying kudos to the Mount Clemens Cheer Squad, who had the opportunity to perform at the Pistons game on Sunday, January the 15th. And from all that I've heard, uh, they did an outstanding job, and they represented themselves in the school district well. I'd also like to give kudos, uh, to the Seminole students for their involvement at the interfaith Martin Luther King celebration. I would like to give kudos to my colleague, Ms. Collins, for bringing the idea of an HVC, pro, HVAC program, uh, to the district, and kudos to Mr. Ireland for making her vision and dream a reality. So kudos for, for that. It shows that an idea that's once put into motion, uh, can become a reality, and that is what happened, uh, with this HVAC program. And I thank those involved, uh, that took it from an idea, conceptualization, and to put it into concrete, and now it's a reality. Uh, and I think it's even getting credits now with the CTE.
Where's, we're working at, is that a yes, not yet?
Well, not yet. We're going through the application process through the state of Michigan. Uh, that has to be submitted in February, so we'll know later in the year.
Looks good, though.
Hopefully, it will be, it will be authorized by the state, and the students can get credit for it, even if they don't get credit for, like Ms. Collins said, um, you get lifelong experience, you get a vocational experience that you can go right in to the workforce upon graduation, uh, from high school. So, uh, kudos, uh, for that program, and I hope that program grows, where we do, we have, we have a waiting list of students, uh, to be on, to be on, to be involved in that program. I always welcome, uh, comments, uh, from the public, uh, whether they're ridiculing or informing or celebrating the board. Uh, this is what we're here for. Uh, we ran for this position to serve the community, and getting the community feedback and input, uh, is valuable for each one of us here. Um, so we do, we do hear your concerns, and the board does listen, and we, uh, sometimes we change in the middle of the stream, and sometime it takes us a little longer. Uh, but all the decisions that we make here are for the betterment of, of the students and the community, uh, that we serve. Um, on a, sort of, uh, I won't say neg, yeah, negative note, last night, uh, at the basketball game, there was a, some, some bad actions, or bad, bad activities, or poor choices of adults from the other school, uh, that had to be removed, uh, from the building, uh, because they were just totally being obnoxious and disruptive, uh, in front of our student body. Uh, so they were asked to leave. Uh, they left the facility prior to the police, the sheriff department getting here. The sheriff department was here because, uh, they were contacted because we didn't want a melee to, to happen because of some irresponsible adults acting like, acting worse than children. Uh, so kudos to the staff, uh, that handled that situation in an expeditiously manner. Uh, kudos for the sheriff department for being here, uh, on call and on standby to prevent, uh, anything for happening. It, it's just sad that that kind of activity happened, and, uh, it happened, but I'm glad it was not our students or our parents, uh, that created that, that chaos, uh, at, at the, uh, at the basketball game last night. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Member Walker.
Support.
Seconded by Member Walker.
Hey, did you enjoy that?
It's not, it's not debatable. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Kahoon?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at 7:07 in the PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.